Welcome everybody. Thank you. Thank you for being here. We need participation. We need as much of it as possible. I'm glad you're here. This is a regular city council meeting. It's not a workshop. The Air Force cellular phones and electronic devices are prohibited, except for, as are the I Texas code five five one point three. Alright, so I'm gonna call a meeting to order. And please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. We got a corral, all councils in the present person. City Secretary, print the notice of the meeting.
We have the notice of the meeting was posted by a few candidates.
City Secretary, a couple of comments.
Uh, we have one.
While yourself, please take your board.
My name is Karen Cantell, living in Ward one. And I'm here to talk about information discussion items number eight dash ten implications. Let me start the city council with the prayer. Well, religion is not what shouldn't be in governmental functions. What pray, pray silently, what religion, you can go to church. This is where we do city business. But even this goes on here, not the governmental function. And separation of religion, government mandated, under the steps or clause of the constitution that prevents governmental establishment with preference of religion and that preserves religious freedom from government intrusion. I don't think we need to pray. Before the city council meeting, we've been doing very fine without it. Also, everyone that does have the freedom of religion, your choice, but you don't have the freedom to voice that onto me or anybody else. So, you adopt this, this will be my last answer. Thank you for letting me speak.
City Secretary, there are no other comments? Okay, alright, so let's move on to presentation, recognition, fact, information, there are none. Uh, city mayor report, I do have some items that's for the councils here. It's from a phone call conversation for had with residents, constituents, citizens after the last council meeting. But first, I want to thank you, the residents, for all your thoughts, prayers for my for my family, myself, my son, as we struggled with COVID, struggled with getting my home better and into a Alpine is home. Alright, so as you know, the goal for city council and administration, I think it's all of our goal, we're gonna talk about the form discussion item number ten, is that we want things to be more transparent for citizens, residents, and we want it to be easier to understand. It's real easy to get into a professional field and start talking jargon, use of aggregates, and not realizing that people who aren't exposed to these things, day in and day out, may not understand what we're talking about. So I just wanted to remind us of those. It increases resident involvement too, and they feel like they can understand what's going on. So I'm also gonna start asking councilmen first, whenever you have numbers to present, please explain to us how you came to that number. People are often intimidated, and I've learned this over my years of teaching, both secondary and post-secondary education. People are intimidated by them, sort of, some, maybe not all, but they're intimidated by numbers, percentages, statistics, but they're not gonna ask you, well, how did you come up with, that's gonna be seventeen percent? Well, what does that mean when we translate it to the homeowner who has a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house? What does that percentage mean? So please explain, uh, to make sure that our, that's understood. For example, when we say property taxes only supplies a certain percentage of revenue that the city brings in, we need to know, how did you calculate that? Did you use the entire budget? Which at worst is gonna be a tiny percentage. Property taxes, I'm gonna go to the general trunk. Would I be able to be there explaining how we're arriving? Also, when we talk about reserves, it's commonplace for us, you know what reserves are. But what I discovered from a text message, as some of the citizens saw, the reserve is just a savings account that we could spend anything on. And currently, the city's reserves are typically dedicated to a certain project or department. So they're not really just a catchall for money that we can just give to whatever, they're already dedicated. Okay, so that's important to understand. If we talk about reserves, let's make sure we back up, so maybe somebody online or in the audience goes through. And then once again, just the aggregate. People in general aren't gonna wanna engage in discussions or questions if they're confused about what's going on. So we need to make sure that we are overly transparent. We can't have transparency if we aren't actually actively educating everyone as to what this is. Also, the community disengages when we have meetings that last till nine or ten o'clock. No one wants to be here till nine or ten o'clock. So I know we've been talking about trying to cut the meetings down to an hour, hour and a half, possible. So that way residents wanna be engaged and we can opt in and concentrate. When we're talking about heavy items that the city is having to make decisions on, after a while, a lot of time, it gets to the tenth discussion item, your brain is spent. I don't care how smart you are, your brain is spent. The level of concentration that we need decreases as these meetings increase. So disengagement would continue. We wanna make sure that we're engaging the public. So I think a good rule of thumb is, when you're getting ready to visit on the agenda, and you're speaking to G O, asking, what's the meeting look like? Do we already have a very heavy agenda? Is this something that could maybe put on the next meetings? G O keeps a spreadsheet, I believe, with what's going on for each of the meetings. So if it's not time sensitive, if it's something that has time. So it'd be, also it'd be better to have more special call meetings, like, I think this one's a special call meeting. The long drawn out marathon, the, the long meeting, she says, a marathon. And then also, if somebody addresses a specific person, let's say we're asking G O a question, please let G O be into that, bless him. Pushes the ball to you. So whenever somebody's addressed, please let that person be in script. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is the city charter. The city charter, here it is, and all of it's boring. It was written in nineteen ninety-three, amended in nineteen ninety-five, and again in two thousand and five. We are in twenty twenty-three, and we have talked about this for at least last nine months, that we need to update this. This is only the process to update. It's at least eight years outdated at minimum. And if we wanna get this on November twenty twenty-four election, it has to be in a November election, we need to start thinking about going through the steps we need to update our charter. Alright, and then that was it. Okay, city attorney. There, okay, city attorney, city mayor.
The only item I have, and I, I thank the faithful for your patience, I may do multiple items throughout this past six months. And I provided you with the revenue and expense reports from March till August. Um, I'm not gonna go over all of them. Obviously, March to July are kind of few. Uh, it's the few that look up to date. And to give you guys kind of an understanding, um, as well as the public, thank you guys for tuning in. Um, what we go over in the revenue and expense report for those who, um, who aren't aware, are the main operating funds for the city of Alpine. The first one being the general fund. Um, we budgeted an estimated total revenues of five point eight million. As of August thirty-first, we had brought in five point zero seven million. Expenses, of course, five point eight, actual expenses are four million, one hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one. And we are running under revenue, so we have brought in more than we have expended. Um, that is currently primarily due to the lack of responses for the request for a proposal for C A D. A chunk of the public works department was to outsource C A D for certain parts of the state of Alpine. We submitted the proposal twice, and we got zero response both times. And so those are funds that we have not expended. Um, for the water, wastewater and sanitation department, um, we est- are estimating revenues at five point six million. Um, we've currently brought in, at the end of August, four point six million, and expenditures are about four point two million. Um, expenditures are currently running under revenue. Um, the primary reason for this is turnover and staffing. Um, we have a young few force, which does, um, have lower pay rates, uh, so that does affect it. Um, we also have a few big projects that we're hoping to have completed in the voices of the fund. Um, we are on the banking game. I've never known the business to have to be banked to get paid. Um, we have a few women Alpine, um, that do have outstanding purchases with the city that we would like to pay them. Um, we're looking at close to about a hundred thousand, we might get off our books and this is a big. Uh, the airport fund, I'm not gonna stick on ABOS quite yet. Um, we budgeted seven hundred and fifty-one thousand. Um, we currently brought in seven hundred thousand, eight seventy-five at the end of August, and the expenditure were six hundred, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Um, we did not, or we were not required to pay the city's portion, the matching through the grant, um, for this next big project of Texas, which is a layout plan. And they moved our layout plan before A W O three location, so that we had a plan to move it. Um, so we have those funds, um, both in the revenue and expenditure, but we're not gonna bring them in, we'll utilize them next year. Um, hopefully, if everything goes through okay. And there is a budget amendment in place on the Council of Chi- Idaho State to increase the airport revenues. We do foresee them bringing in more than what was originally estimated in revenue. And the other five items, then we do foresee them spending more money on gas, fuel, uh, or fuel, so kind of balances itself out. The hotel occupancy, uh, we budgeted six hundred and fifty, we're currently at six hundred and thirty-two thousand. Expenditures, um, you'll notice the expenditures are even like higher. That's because a portion of that was the reserves or fund balance, utilizing what is the set aside specifically for a cop, um, to cover some of the additional renovation construction projects there. And we currently spent six hundred and two thousand, so they're just right under. Um, I don't foresee achieving any of the fund balance, um, for expenditures. I do have in our budget amendment and a recommendation, recognition of increased revenues. Um, we typically get that last big push, uh, with the last quarter, um, collections from our larger hotels. Um, they only came quarterly, so we're looking at getting some extra funding there as well. The gas utility, um, we budgeted two point two million in revenues, two hundred, or we brought in two point zero five six million, and their expenditures are at one point six million. Um, they have done an awesome job with completing the necessary tasks under expected costs. Um, so that's been a benefit. Uh, we did just recently fulfill one of the open positions that's been open, um, in our customer service department, so we now have to gas the water. And those are viable assets there. Our interest in saving, um, for those of you who were here for the work talk, um, this is where I wanna mention, we budget what we have to pay. So we budgeted a hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventeen. That is the general fund responsible portion of the debt payments. We've currently brought in a hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight. Um, we typically bring in more on the I N S. Um, I N S does get all of the delinquent, um, so when we have property owners who are paying back taxes, uh, that does help make up the difference of time. And as of August, uh, we have paid all of our debt for this fiscal year for a total of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So currently, when you look at the estimated fund balances, they should all slightly increase. Um, September, I do want to give our finance team a big shout out. Um, they are all here within about a year, um, except for one employee who has the tenure. They have done an awesome job with hands-on learning as fast as they can to ensure we get things cleaned up. Especially with understanding the importance of open purchase orders, making sure we have the correct buying item, correcting their own mistakes. Um, we all make mistakes. We have only one different checking accounts to make a deposit, it is going to pull the wrong deposit slip. Um, so, but they're catching that, they're fixing it. So September's been a real big cleanup for them, making sure that we hold out the next eleven days that we're on track with everything. Um, I'm also big shout out for departments who have been, uh, willing to work with the finance department in getting these things up. So you'll see some of the shifts with the end of September. Uh, some of the date items, but it'll be a different thing with the revenue side, with the general fund, is the payment of the franchise admin to the homeowners. Um, we have cut the remaining portions of those, except for obviously September's franchise. Um, that can't be done till the next fiscal year, it's based off of our receipts for the, is it the year? Um, you'll see last minute expenditures as we're begging people, can we, can you please give us an invoice? Um, so you'll see some of those expenditures change as well. Um, but overall, the city is operating with more revenue than it senses. Um, that doesn't mean that we haven't tried to complete all of the items that we set out to complete, which is unfortunately have those lots, like, for the C A D. If no one wants to submit a proposal, I guess so. Any questions?
So, how would you pay the money forward?
Um, three point up.
Okay, so, what, where did you see right, um?
We have, um, we really truly have. They, they've done this with what they could do. Um, we fulfilled some of their, they require me to know the utility department, uh, coming through on new patients about a backhoe. Um, I always say that, no, I agree about that. Um, we did not purchase a backhoe. Um, the guys, uh, they preferred to add to their, put in base without trench. And so we made slight changes, which are pretty common through. Um, the one thing to note when you look at the expenditure, the only thing that's not in there that does, it is a big period. It varies, um. From fund to fund, it's anywhere from a hundred and fifty to four. Probably about not like.
So the business is, we're looking about a billion dollars under there. Business is revenue is down, but expenditures are down.
And that's the one thing that's, for it, it's really important, I'm glad to introduce myself to understand, and this is the communication. Um, I personally, because of overrun of budget, I am more conservative to begin with. So we'll always stay slightly below, um. The budget amendment is only required because when our charter and ordinance say we have to do it, um, when we're making specific things. But if at any point during the year, I felt that we were doing, paying low revenue and way above on expenses, I would have pulled the budget under, or not, or not moving forward. Council member standing.
It was one month ahead, in percentage, which would be.
You're only two good one. Council member stands. Councilor agrees. That's that too, the video, that's awesome.
Now, since staff updates are moving to public hearings, let me remind everyone that if you come up to speak on a public hearing, the council can respond to you in section. The public hearing number one.
Uh, we have a little bit from the city, I mean, to save the time, trade for the public hearing a little bit, and then, uh, at the end, save the time you're supposed to.
Okay, so the public hearing section is now open at five A P P. Let me, the procedure from your office. Alright, so public hearing number one, to obtain citizen views and comments regarding the second final reading. The ordinance twenty twenty-three dot O A F O one, and ordinance making appropriations for the city to support of the city of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-three, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Appropriating money to a C P fund to pay interest and principal on the city's indebtedness. Adopting the annual budget of the city of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'm moving on to public hearing number two. Public hearing to tenses and views and comments regarding the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh nine dash oh one. And ordinance approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, proposed tax rate of zero point four six six three two six per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation for the fiscal year October one, twenty twenty-three, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, for use to support of the fiscal government of the city of Alpine, Texas. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, moving on to public hearing number three. To obtain citizen views and comments regarding special use permit twenty twenty-three dash oh nine dash oh one. A short-term rental special use permit, allowing a short-term rental to be established at nine oh six West Salt Road Street. The property owner of record is Casa La Vista Rental LLC, parcel ID of the subject property is one zero four four five. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on. Public hearing number four, to obtain citizen views and comments regarding special use permit twenty twenty-three dash oh nine dash oh, pretty good short-term rental, special use permit, allowing a short-term rental to be established at five oh two North Eighth Street. The property owner of record is Andrew Willis, Paulie Hammerman, parcel ID of the subject property is one two zero six eight. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, moving on to public hearing title number five. To obtain citizen views and comments regarding special use permit twenty twenty-three dash oh nine dash oh three. A short-term rental special use permit, allowing a short-term rental to be established at four oh five South Eighth Street. The property owner of record is Alonzo Ramos, the parcel ID of the subject property is one two two six seven. So anyone here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda, city secretary. Hold time, sorry. Time is five fifty-three, public hearing submitted. Thanks, I'm now consent agenda season.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda takes six items. Item one, approval of September twelve, twenty twenty-three, special meeting minutes. Item two, approval of all the things that you've been discussing on the building and permission. Item three, approval of the executive, uh, council for twelve, twenty twenty-three, special city council meetings, including scheduled meetings. Item four, approval of special use permit twenty twenty-three oh nine oh one. Short-term rental special use permit, allowing a short-term rent to be established at nine oh six West Salt Road Street. Property owner of record is Casa La Vista Rental LLC, parcel ID of the subject property is one zero four four five. Item five, approval of special use permit twenty twenty-three oh nine oh two. A short-term rental special use permit, allowing a short-term rent to be established at five oh two North Eighth Street. Property owner of record is Andrew Willis, Paulie Hammerman, parcel ID of the subject property is one two zero six eight. Item six, approval of special use permit twenty twenty-three oh nine three. A short-term rent, special use permit, allowing short-term rent to be established at four oh five South Eighth Street. Property owner of record is Alonzo Ramos, parcel ID of the subject property is one two two six.
I need a second. It's a lot bigger, bigger, you like? I can't, I'm asleep, the entire sentence is just there. Okay, moving on to information or discussion items, information discussion item number one, city manager, read it out. Alpine Public Library Report, I take your direct response, wow. Sorry.
We think, I don't know whether I'll, I think we started the whole part already. Four, I was given on in last quarter. Been busy at the library over the summer. We had three students that started our class in April. And one of them passed her official test in office, they're on the chat office. Next one is making the test now, and the third one is on their practice tests. So we're really happy about that, so we have one graduate. With the Zeta Texas Core Course Efficient Grant, buy books, calculators, online learning help with these, and first classes. Students both of our program, pass the practice, there's the relevant profile, which is, what course admission? Uh, to cover the efficient test, so that the test, four subjects, it's a total of one hundred and four five dollars to take the test. So that is covered for them, the only cost they have to devote. It's a practice test, and for those, it's just the total of the test. And we're including Martha, Fort Davis, Maryland, and Sterling, who they are offering for the opportunities for students in the iconic area with distance learning, firmly with the first sessions. Our foster master classes started September last, we now have nine students. And, uh, including two, we are also registering students from D S L citizenship classes. Classes are available for online and in person. Our fall Spanish classes started tomorrow. But with the summer, we administered eight G exams for our test center. Uh, their test center hours in fall were a hundred and fifty, nine again, five to ten. The steam day Texas fees twenty twenty-four grant, through the museum and library services, to the Texas State Bible and Archives Commission. The P L will coordinate with A I S D, the operating program, element, school students. The purpose of the program is to help mitigate learning losses for the pandemic, curating, and skills of the team, and augment student's ultimate learning. Every event will spend three minutes a day, one meeting, four grade classes, and moments. Students will receive a copy of Tiger Rising by Kate Mello as part of the program. The learning purpose will be to literary technical syllabus, and the program gives them some, some, some training, and they'll be able to make and print a key column of their favorite symbol. It creates out of the area of private schools and offers a program, and will have a home student program at the library at this point. Uh, next, we're gonna work with fifth grade classes, which can take day. We have summer reading program, the kids', nine is summer reading program, it's called. We had weekly programs to beginning a lot of this, with different topics, including a couple of, because of parents and school reports. We can learn branch state fund, average attendance of this program was good. Summer reading, ultimately included theme staff, which is online reading program. And for this year, we doubled the number of people with reading online than last year. We also had almost a double increase, the people that were bringing those badges. And an eighteen percent increase in the total level of minutes read, so last year was just a little, almost about a thousand minutes, this year, we're a little more. We had jam story time for ages up to ten on September sixteenth. Fifty people with them were reading drafts and scare photos. So, some upcoming programs. The library will present a dark sky program, program on September thirtieth at six P M, host speaker is Nicole Wilson. She's an auto, auto mechanical technician, she's a girl, she's gonna talk about her role. The operator of the nine one, the Sag of America. Over fourteen, we're gonna have a monster match for ages four to twelve. And we have a family group, the program for November, but that's been suspended. And the next, the mayor, A P L, received three seventy-six millimeter telescopes, the mass of the Each fun scope has a backpack, includes three items, the red dot finder, a new map, auxiliary map, and several books. Ready for checkout, wait in queue, and we'll operate this one. Previously, I mentioned, it may have been, people, 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 people. Previously, I mentioned the Big Ben, people who saw it during the period of the operation, while they were in the. Website is bigbenhealth.org. We had our official watch for the website, the flowers with Big Ben Health on September fifteenth. The K D A, information for one hundred and fourteen different organizations, programs, outlines, and then evidence. For the world in progress. If more information, nothing. Finally, our library expansion. Started planning for library expansion. Find it. I'm counting the say, take the word up and we'll show you. So that's it. Thank you. Thank you for the call.
Our council questions. Get it. That's awesome. Okay, that one we're getting on, that was Big Ben Health.
Big Ben Health.
Health.
Health.org. And it basically is the Big Ben Health.
Okay.
There's Big Ben Health, uh, large. Uh, so we had a really good. That's a good point. And so then we probably go user, we'll do the same thing. But it's not easy to correct, but it's kind of.
Well, I believe for us. Okay. Alright, information discussion item number two. The Big Ben report by their.
Hello. I'm Virginia Sandball. I'm a community educator and I advocate family crisis center here in Alpine. Uh, just wanted to give you an overview of our last year and I'm putting, I'm talking about here, I mean, August twenty twenty-two through July of this year. Those are the numbers that we're looking at. So the family crisis center employs eleven throughout our whole agency. Uh, we serve survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, teen dating violence, um, dating violence and, um, violent crime. To those who live, work, or attend school in the body habits of the serve, Brewster, Jeff Davis, the C D O, Terrell, and. Here in our Alpine office, uh, we have a very fantastic crew led by our fearless mayor, uh, Linda Gallo. She's our executive director. We have Wendy Farber Ross, she's our business administrator. Um, Red Tucker is our, um, assistant business manager, or administrator, I should say. Um, Bonna Vega is our shelter manager. Gina, uh, Wilcox is our program coordinator. Again, Virginia. Um, I did misspell my name, so please don't hold that against. And Naomi Adnus is our, is our new first full salt advocate. I gave an opponent against them because I just was not thinking that day. Uh, again, from August of last year through July, um, of this year, um, we were able to make a positive impact. On the community of Alpine, uh, specifically, most notably in the number of clients that we serve, uh, the outreach, um, that we were able to provide. As well as emergency shelter and financial assistance. We have four advocates in the Alpine office and with those four advocates in that year, we were able to provide almost nine thousand services to one hundred nine clients. It was huge. This included nineteen children and, uh, eleven senior, uh, adults. Um, of those one hundred nine clients, ninety-two were female, seventeen male, and one non-coming gender. Um, Gina Wilcox, additional speaking program coordinator, is also our, um, legal advocate. Um, and she was able to assist seven in that timeframe, uh, with legal entakes with, uh, Texas real brand, uh, legal aid, assistance for protect orders. Um, and family law issues, including, uh, divorce. Our volunteers provided over seven thousand hours during that timeframe, uh, to assist the mission of the family crisis center. Um, myself and, uh, Naomi Edlund is, uh, our outreach coordinators. Uh, we participated in four and were provided over a hundred fifty-nine outreach for training events. This included food, uh, distributions, um, safe, which is the, um, sexual assault forensic exam and text track trainings. Um, we also help out, um, office hours at Salt Rawls, as well as we support Davis and, uh, Sanderson. Uh, and we provided a lot of teacher service, um, which I'm very excited about. We're, uh, going to be doing inter. We're going to be doing presentations at the middle school. We've been dying to be in there. Uh, anyhow, um, the family crisis center operates two emergency shelters, one in Alpine, one of them, and the other one in the C D O. Uh, during the, again, the timeframe, August to July, uh, twenty-four Alpine victims specifically in domestic violence and or sexual assault. Were provided in emergency shelter for a total of one hundred nights, eighteen nights. Um, again, during this timeframe for Alpine clients, we were able to, uh, provide over forty-one thousand dollars in financial assistance. In the form of rent and deposit utilities, transportation, childcare, relocation needs, um, food baskets, and gift cards. Uh, as far as community education, again, we were able specifically to do night presentations and, uh, outreach, uh, over four thousand, uh, people. With the presentations, uh, in the areas of teen dating violence specifically, domestic violence awareness, sexual assault awareness, um, bullying and stalking to the area of students. We have a little, um, free pantry outside our office. As many of you know, um, and it provides food assistance to the clients. Or to not only clients, but the, uh, local Alpine community as well. We noticed, uh, last year that there was an increase in the number of, um, people that were, uh, seeking, um. Or taking use of the, um, food pantry, um, which we attributed to, uh, of various, various things. We have noticed the increase this year of one, we think it's the heat because we have noticed that we have increased, have food baskets. That we, that we give out. So we're trying to think of. Um, as many of you know, we purchased the old, uh, community center located at four oh two East Valley Avenue. Uh, we will provide a new office building and shelter for our Alpine location, which we're very excited about. The increased size layout will allow our advocates to better support our clients in their journeys. Uh, provide a larger modern, uh, shelter to assist more emergency clients as well as sustain the community. Um, our advocates are on twenty-four seven rotation, uh, on hall. Um, and that hotline is staffed by volunteers twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. So you can reach us anytime. Walk-ins are always, uh, welcome. We are, uh, available Monday to Friday, eight to five. Uh, we do have a website, um, M C C B B dot org. We can reach out to our, uh, office, eight three seven seven two three four. We have a hotline, eight hundred eight three four zero six five four. Um, and like again, we're located in six oh nine, or six oh nine, I'll give this one, giving us another location, six oh six North Street here in Alpine. Um, thank you so much for your support of what we do. Uh, we could not do what we do without support, unity. Um, it's one of those things that we say we want to work ourselves out of the job. So I, again, thank you. Oh, yes, yes, that is new, yes. So that will be, we'll be able to provide so much time and means of transportation to not only this community, but the all extended officer. So being tired of me asking, what are they going to do with them? Well, yes. No, no. Although it may be nice to have a small list. Well, um, yeah, we're hoping to use not only set the test, uh, stations, buses, or vans, whatever, all of the vehicles. Um, but we're not to be able to do. Yeah. No, anyone can, can come and, and receive the best. And we do encourage them. Well, preference is given to our clients, but we do on occasion, um, we have great support from local communities and local businesses. Who, um, have a influx sometimes of food, and so we just try to get as many people to come in. Uh, we received, um, a whole bunch of formula not too long ago. It's, we were in for, you know, the, the community just come in and. Well, because we did not want, uh, you know, we don't want any formula to go waste. So no, anybody can take advantage in your competition. And, okay, thank you. Any other questions or trouble, tell us. Thank you.
Okay, action, information discussion item number three, outside where a lot of. Okay, information of discussion number four, house number ready, yes.
Yes, I was approached by the record talent, ours, Stacy Bull. Regarding the possibility of completing our site ordinance to include others following our effort.
Ouch, okay, alright, so moving on to discussion personally minded by. So just so that the public is aware as a whole and council was updated, if the city does not own. They do not belong to us, therefore we don't regulate them. Um, they would have, anyone would have to ideally get permission from A E T, who is a process. Decision to amend the site ordinance to include that type of, we not allow it. Correct. And we would maintain the things and the people on our side. We already have some ongoing competitive. Drive cell posting even those types. They, these big concerns, they did, they may not find all that they did in the past. They still do on occasion. I think the true. A bit more strict, come with. We have a lot of ordinances for nineteen seventy.
Um, do we? Late nineties was, uh, late nights, so it was updated then, maybe since.
I, I, my thoughts were, we not have a. Yeah, I don't know. And no, we don't have a three people to operate by. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna follow it. Uh, I know that we can put stuff up at quarters, I think they still have. But we don't have. Alright, moving on to step, I know, number five.
I've got three on here and none of you like good law. Theo wrote, discuss the common enter procedures. Principles and city council meetings, that's three, that's touch, that a T M L, maybe like. Went to the T M L meeting, then, um, the, the biggest thing I did quite with, and I'm, I was the only person, is I saw it. It could be done, it doesn't take away, it just doesn't make a bunch. They sent you to do it. Jerry always got on it. I said, I saw it. Now I know why I'm here, because they would, they would present one and she had an audience member. Uh, taking part in, I didn't even say I could move, but without what they were looking at, we had no way of knowing what they were doing. So you all don't have to, it's not a proven law. I just, I won't be doing it anymore.
And the good thing with us is that maybe always feels this background on whatever it is. Right, so that does, that does help it's conscious, likely.
I know, I know.
Following up with that.
So that's all I have to say. Alright, you also have item number six. Item number six, council number seven.
Vegas Hatch, I, I got a official report made, maybe, just, maybe I rather. I didn't go to them last week. But, you know, I could hit, hit the main point. I don't even know that we need to go over them. I'm not going to read these to y'all. You know, it's just basically what they, what they did, they made motion, what they, you know, since it wasn't a budget. Their stuff was all on here also, so. There any. No, I, I didn't, I, nothing that, you know, they asked a couple of questions that was, they were concerned about their school parent. It's like, we're concerned about ours. But at the moment, they aren't charged. I did get a hold of G L and sheriff. About our rights, our charge, start on. I'll start having to put them in there. I don't know if I need to survey or read all this stuff.
Well, the only item of my concern is they improved the tax contract if I hadn't wanted to. You weren't there. Yeah, it was last week on Tuesday. I inquired about it. I've been waiting since for a while. Because we do have to prove it. Um, I have long initial for the next meeting. Well, I have to go be Julie, the judge, uh, Kimberly and. I would like to talk to you because you have to have an attachment for us to prove it. Um, ideally, it should have a five percent increase because that's what we kind of talked about in the coming year here. Um, but if I don't have it, I just obviously. They had approved their. Well, that was the only item of.
And then number seven, uh, you know, we're going to get on the bus. I'll sit there twenty-third on other right now. We're going to get on the bus, we're going to look at the roads and now. I think there needs to be a plan in place because we can't drive down there. So if y'all were driving, I drive mine all the time, just, and y'all, as I know y'all do, you live. And, and make them know that where we could go and look at the worst one.
So I actually asked Eddie, um, because we're, we're presenting everything. Eddie's actually going to pick out the worst ones within the city, uh, so that we can hit those. Um, we are not going every road in Alpine. Um, it'd be a lovely Sunday day cruise. And so we are going to only focus on the ones that easily does believe are, are the worst. Maybe a couple to show you what the difference is between a silk coat and a cane, uh, the ones they charge. Um, it shouldn't be a very long drive. Um, we'll also be stopping by the yard to, to give a brief description of all the materials that are used in the equipment. Um, for a more visual, um, what, you know, the base, grade four, grade five, the bullshit activity. Our tube's going to end up based on, um.
But it's more, yes.
It's more of a visual so that everyone can see, but we can have a plan in place. Um, and then we will come back here and have a. The first part is more for, not trying to know them. Certainly, no, because we're going to be there a couple of weeks after, uh, voting on that. So we got a venue in some corner, they say, while the plane. We put it, I think we could turn it out there and work our way out of them. The others do that. I have, I have never gotten a home, I, I just got anything. So Gina actually had followed up with Mark. Do you know, would you give us an update?
Um, we're on this, we just invited this, 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 a, we're all into purposes of workshop, under the, that we, that we, that we consider the special and quality. And it doesn't deal with the problem. It remained them aware of that, they should, they're legal comfortable. It wasn't, um, necessarily ready to do anything, you know, we make everybody, they're allowed. So, uh, it's going to be all of the town, twelve mayor, city manager, uh, she's police, Eddie, and then the rest of the flat field of the, of about four.
So it is regular side, but it is limited, um. So it's really, it's going to be a first time, first serve. Um, we're going to try to source them.
Somebody's getting cars in it.
We'll try. Hope no one gets cars in.
No.
We're putting that. No, we're putting that. Yeah.
So I know I have two for sure.
We actually posted the agenda aside from the seven or eight that we listed, uh, it'll be on first come, first served week, so the earlier the younger the better. The best will be different from Saturday, and we'll. In the parking lot, there is actually gonna start to come.
And we departed eleven.
Well, I don't know, I can't, sorry. But I didn't, but the company here, so.
I'm hoping that will take no more than forty five minutes, um, while we are in bus, we're not really going eight, ten, twelve, not Alpine. Um, we want to hear the full effect of every couple. So currently we are providing counsel and staff lunch, so five, ten minutes, grab a sandwich or drink, drink or something. Um, and then I really totally have on you more discussed, and yes, I agree with everyone of A Street. Two, I let's do half and buy Eddie. And Eddie, I'm just trying to. I'd ask. I told them this is his time to. And like you said, we have our team too.
Is part of the discussion to, it'll be about seal code versus hot mix.
Yes, that's why he wants to give you a display of what material he uses, because it is different. Um, part of it is the techniques, um, seal code versus hot mix. Um, and then a little bit in regards to back drag, catchy, aquapatch, hotbox, different. But we're gonna try to touch a little bit of everything, um, but the length of the session is probably really dependent on the public. It could be an hour, it could be ten minutes, it could be all.
Is your, because of things that go came back, there's some qualities and just what's out there.
So would like to do that separate, um, Eddie and I have already discussed that in regards to concrete, you know, and going in and playing concrete. Um, but we do know that that does have, um, impact on the water flow. And making sure that we're not going directly to someone's yard or house. Um, so we're also looking at what type of burn we need to put in, if we need to. So like on Murphy Street, if you've ever been down the, the second half towards eleven, um, there's like a little concrete, uh, dip. We need to look at that because once we put that flow of water where there's no barriers, then they're starting carrying up the street because there's no control. Uh, so that's, that really is more of the long, we need to talk to an engineer, how long you guys call that.
Just one minute, so we need to reach out, of these streets that we discussed, probably unnecessarily, I would add, the next page.
Partly, um, Eddie does do a good job of trying to prioritize, um, and then he builds in the ones why I tell him or if he suggested to tell him. Um, we're gonna look at really the ones that are possibly absolutely something done with. Um, I do encourage, like you said, kind of get an idea of your own wards, because we may go over them and you'd be like, oh, you know what, compared to this one. Not as bad, um, but to understand your board, and then as we go through the city as a whole, to understand how these boards. Every year we try to focus on a little bit of every ward, we never focus only on one ward over another, and we try to spread the wealth. Tell me, tell me. Wear comfortable shoes, wear comfortable game on. Okay, moving on to discussion item number A, House number two.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you. The reason I put this on the agenda is that I. Uh, so basically, we have one more, where do we. One of the things that, uh, are working sessions, who were warned by, yeah, they'll go off, there are fourteen specific actions. That are of the law. They range anywhere from a budget, the, the special water security, the things we've been talking about, Iran helps. For the fuel plant, for the location, employee maintenance, management retention, uh, rehabilitating tennis courts. Which we have at the community, I think you could agree with that, yeah, that wall, wide zone, twenty five mile hour speed limit, crosswalks, vice planes. Rain for take back hill, and then the dark static ordinance, noise ordinance, zoning laws, and, uh, making sure we. I put out a month of newsletter, the four by, folks about that. These sort of tie in the specific measures, the realistic. I use this as kind of my milestone marker, saying, get where we're going or not, we'll get. Let's pause, we just wait until. Opportunity for that, uh, I want to send it, anyone wants to get a copy, I also give a assessment for yellow, green, uh, green line track, that's the shoes red.
Just note that the four and five newsletter that you sent out doesn't necessarily have to be just four and five, there are issues that we discussed that have to be with most. Very informative, uh, so if anybody wants to get it, just reply with your email, with your seventy twenty. Because they're very informative. Moving on to discussion item number nine, House number Stevens.
So the reason I put this on, and we're gonna get into, I'm sure a little bit more, uh, about where we are on the budget standpoint, because the action items. One is the budget, the next one is post act rate. Last one. Reason I raised that in my view, I think about budgets. I'll be the revenue that we bring in. Also expenses. We end up with. Those numbers are specific, and I will put the numbers. Property tax. Over the last five years, state in our property tax, we have. Dividing it by the budget, we have a property tax spread of a whole budget, thirteen point two percent. A unlarged, the general fund, which is property advance sort of items, uh, and all items, this total budget. The reason I raise that is we run city of outline, what I call other people's methods, the presidents. We have, uh, taxes that we charge, which is power effects. We have fees that we charge for water, base water, for our. Buy things in terms of fuel, uh, actual gas, and when I think about budget, it's all of those elements that get tied together. Uh, we also have to think about where we are. I challenge any of us, I can't. Yeah, well, what we do, of course, really understand what our fund balances are, that's why Megan, I apply Megan, because you're, you're always gonna make sure you put more money back. But Talos is pretty important, I thought this out of the paper, so for example. Oh, uh, we charge for water, we have a water rate study. We have a study underway regarding to our. With my view, until we understand how all of those come in, I tend to be one who says, it's minimized power tax. And I have to be a supporter of the government. Because there is money available to. But I've been talking about the cash. It's seventeen, three thousand dollars. And I'll beg you, therefore, to put it on, it's not a ninety percent increase, it is a eleven percent increase. Fifty seven, one, divided by, number is a eleven percent increase, not. On increases, how much did it go up? So I just think when we council, think about how much money we want to charge for taxes, how much we want to charge for these. You can take it. That's why we continue to ask questions, raise points, and that important law will take them. We have reserves that are assigned, or fund balances are assigned, and we have fund balances that are. It's locked in where we are, which is why I said, why, I think, we're gonna underline. So we have to ask ourselves, what if I underline by three thousand dollars? We in council are responsible. Number one, the city energy. Number two, we do resolutions, ordinance, set policy. Those are the things. We spent four months getting up to a budget of sixty million dollars, that's not what's in the common act, thirty seven million dollars. I, I hate this, I created a plan, I have. Think we have the action lines, we have a robust discussion.
House number eight.
Will we be going further this afternoon?
Moving on to the last discussion item. It does propose changes to chapter twenty three, city council, the Alpine code ordinance is equally updates the order of business and updates the goal of the teachers. And the form for city council meeting. So this item. And we postponed it to September, um, to allow one time to review, time to build up some background information, which is included in the packet, possible changes. This section of the city ordinance is, is one of the most important sections. Compared to all the other sections, because this outlines how council is going to board with your business, with your agendas, with your motions. Your decorum, how you're gonna. Clearly structure and present information, um, there's been a ton of discussion over the past couple months. Um, several requests for changes, several thoughts, several ideas, time limit, um, restructuring the agenda. Um, what do we want on the agenda? Theo and I both put together different perspectives of what we think should be included, what shouldn't be included. And when this was first done, uh, it took us about nine months to get the draft that was approved before. Um, it was a lot of back and forth with, you know, do we want to change the time of the meeting, do we wanna, um, include more information, do we want to regulate what is. Added and not added to the agenda. Um, the decorum was a whole new section that was added, um, so breakdown of the different types of meetings and the actions that you can take and definition of. Over the past years was done, uh, we've come up with additional information, um, I know the mayor has pointed out the time. Um, regulating how much time each person has to speak, um, I know that Rick has pointed out the ability to have additional public comments or to allow public comments. Points of the agenda, um, the invocation has been, um, brought up and discussed, um. I like the idea of changing the structure of our agenda, um, to make it one more transparent, two, to provide clear direction. Um, I like the idea of having a section that allows council to move items out of order to, you know, I want to put this item up at the top because we have someone who's trying to get back to El Paso. Um, restructuring that. Um, more definition, understanding of timeframes, when reports are due, when packet information is due, when do we get the packets out? And it does take you over the time that's together, um, I know for me, I always feel rushed. Um, having that balance with, okay, we're gonna set a deadline, we're gonna set a deadline, don't leave the deadline, it's the next regular meeting. Um, the compromise being emergency, the defining what an emergency is, um, if it's something that has a specific deadline, maybe that's an emergency. Uh, it's because maybe the visitor's the manager report, I don't mind that there, it's not an emergency, um, but just being a little bit more clear. Um, I think it would make everyone stop here, um, and just come with resolutions. Um, there's a lot, guys, I know that we have postponed this to, um, today, and we're gonna continue to work on it. But we wanted to present you with everything that we thought of, um, I know that Joe put together, and I asked him specifically to remove my comment out of it. Um, only because I really wanted it to come to hand, um, this is all of his guidance and, and how we pursue rebuilding. Um, and it makes it clear, uh, if we say, you know, agenda's gonna have A B and C, and you know, agenda's gonna have A B and C. I think it's also great for the council to have the ability right now to have the discussion with the time limits, um, the public comments. There's a little bit of everything, um, one of the things that I think needs to be added, uh, you know, put together a draft copy of it. Is to clearly define the conflict of interest, um, to have that if the ordinance is specific, it says, what is a conflict? Council's all ingrained with it, and this is a paperwork have to be submitted, um, we all, you know, work around the lines of, well, if it looks bad. Well, why don't we just make it clearly defined, well, this is what a conflict is, it's, it's not a back and forth, we're not having those issues down the road with. You know, what is a conflict, it's not, it's not a conflict, um, he did a great job of providing some of the different other cities. In regards to how they manage their agendas and the timeframes and, you know, I laughed and told Gio that. Proposed it two weeks before, to be able to everything two weeks before, so maybe at one point I'd be more prepared, um. There's just a lot, um, we wanted to get this started so that we're not postponing it, um. The biggest thing that I know that Joe and I have discussed is the deadlines. Um, making sure that those are set and clearly defined, um, the agenda structure, um, we both agree that we'd like to change that. We have a few other cities and then proposed one in here that I think is structured very well. And then there's all the other little items to change, providing more clarity to know what a workshop is, what a call is, what a town hall is. Um, one of the items I know that we talked about that's in here is I'm really interested in how we, um, talk about engaging the community. That's been a big thing from pretty much every single one existing on this council. Um, I mean, to a point where I've even created community engagement projects moving forward, is adding a section of the agenda that is. Um, to provide an opportunity, like Miss Wolfwood, but to be able to present an item, an entrance for council to be able to hear and have that interaction with the public. So that it not be a normal part, you know, of the gym like fun act, I just, hey, I want to come and say this, what's going on. For a big, this was the idea that we thought of, the art community. Um, providing that section, doesn't it always have something for the opportunity for the public to, to be able to come on and have a discussion, guys? Um. The executive reports, presentations, um, I personally would like, as far as the city staff reports, um, we're doing that a little bit. Um, we are very time focused, but I love my team, and I want them to tell you every little thing that goes on within their departments. But five, six minutes, that's even helpful, um, because they get excited, they want to tell you everything going on. So removing the city staff reports, um, allowing city managers for, uh, to do those, um, one per time. So removing the city staff reports, allowing city managers for to do those one per time references. But also unless it's like a big something, having moved as an actual item, not just a staff update. Rescind that a little bit. Joe? Anything else you can think of that I have not touched?
No, I think maybe such on much possibility. There was, you know, information that from the report that I wrote and I've also expressed. The most important step at this point is for law, provided for.
Like to put it all. I don't know if Joe. Um, I just like, you know, we're both beyond structure and over the past couple of years, we've slowly started to put that into place. Not everyone likes change, you know, the public sometimes doesn't appreciate it. But it's a little bit more structured understanding. And then it kind of goes away with the, well, what about this? Why can't we do this? More is more clearly out.
So there are thirty one pages of stuff. We received a review. So my question is, how would you like it back? We're all gonna only do it. And at some point, we're gonna have the workshop to kind of do it.
I, I would like each one of you to provide an email or written note of your top five items you want addressed. For both you and myself. So that we can gather your five items and put them into an ordinance to start a draft. And a lot of it is repetitive in the documentation, because we tried to give as much information. And you have been provided email from myself with the back and forth with items of suggestion as well. That was very helpful, by the way, for you presented your point, Joe presented his point. But I, I think if we had all five or all six of your five items, I do believe a lot of people overlap, who they're not. And we can narrow that down to a draft ordinance that we update. I would like for you to start off definitely with your five biggest points. But if there is absolutely something that you are dead set against, you can put it at the bottom and say, do not want. And I don't want us to waste our time with something that may all of you may not want. It, it does seem that's what you told me. Definitely add your questions, your thoughts, but if you didn't, it's both Joe and myself. And we can start formulating, Joe will do ninety percent of the work, probably like you, see, great. Putting out those ordinances. And I would just like to be able to, you know, let's have a discussion with okay, yeah, or hey, I like to sit here more than this here. Yeah, it's like a work for Alpine. And you've heard me say in the past, you know, we utilize other city.
Yeah, that works great. Could just, I, I know you've been top five, but I've been, I give a thought for me. So if you wanna, if more than five, I don't like it, like.
When we actually look through everything, there really are too many big topics. The agenda is one, timeframe is another, public hearing is another, conflict is interest is another. And then cleaning up is the funny, that's a big, might be like the session town hall, that's another. So there aren't. Yeah, same, but you can lump it, but there aren't that many big topics. And I mean, when you look at all the information, you look at the back and forth that everything's provided, it really improved in five big areas.
Can y'all resend that email because it has since been buried, there are about two hundred other emails. Where y'all been answering back and forth? We can't, we will not. They answered questions.
I can say a lot of it's great.
So those are agreements between us, what we would like for the ability to have in front of us to prepare for the meetings. Ideally, don't prebuild and. Let us know, that's just what we're wanting. And these are your regulations. Falls and how you.
You know, it's like the biggest script reviews that you guys agree on.
Then we'll start preparing or we're all working with you, you know, we're preparing what we agree on. So at least we're not idly leading and then as you get your feedback, we can go and pull that one.
But then you can be back, yeah, if you want.
You can tell it, leave it as it.
Do you have a date for that? Yeah, because I'm serious, it's under two hundred other emails still. Any other comments, councilman Stevens? Can you do that? I feel I put right in the last, but I. So I'm questioning what most, the land is down to do this, we just, I mean, we do things like this. That can look pretty fast, so I kind of still like to go through some of these and. Move it pretty fast off some of the issue, but it allows us to be able to, to voice our concerns while we're doing this.
See if we wanna say the.
That one. But it was quite a bit, it did, you know, the. There you go, and it went really fast. You know, it still allows us to voice structure there, but it moved pretty fast.
So we would be doing the same thing, because you'll see the red line in the yellow, so we'll go through the whole thing. But we both are working, by the way, we're not postponing, I just ordered you a copy of.
Right. And that way people will know, some people don't go in initially. Now, you know, they're just coming in. All right. So we're gonna take a short break before we move into the action items, second email or a couple of those would maybe private discussion. So shorten the break.
One second.
Everybody ready? We're back in session, back. We're moving on to action items to be accompanied by brief statement of facts, including where funds are coming from, if applicable. Action item number one, city manager, you would read that?
Approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh eight dash oh one. In ordinance making appropriations for the support of the city of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty three. And ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty four, appropriating money to a sinking fund to pay interest and principal on the city's indebtedness. Adopting the annual budget of the city of Alpine, Texas for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four.
Okay, I, I need a motion first, before we discuss. Motion? I need a second. Okay.
On this one, if we could please at the end, when we take the vote, a roll call.
A roll caller, okay.
This is a record vote, so we'll have to have each person vote for.
Okay. All right, and discussion, city manager, you may start.
So the budget that's being currently presented, I did follow up with some additional information to the council. And this one is including budget allocations based on an in a tax rate of point four, six, six, three, two, six. And the difference in this budget is based off of feedback from council. Going in that direction at the time, we had our certified values with two hundred seventeen accounts and protests. And going with the exact same proposed tax rate as the current fiscal year would have brought in an additional five hundred plus thousand. The budget was amended to reflect additional expenses within administration and the public works. Specifically to cover out for skating and to allow for the software procurement and the employee compensation procurement. This removed the use of the fund balance to cover the overage from the original budget that was presented. So this is the amended budget based off of that tax rate allocation.
All right, councilman Stokes.
So when we approve this, if we change the tax rate on number two, then I'm changed.
So what will change within the current budget allowed is the updated cover page and information that outlines what the proposed tax rate is. So like the one approving the tax rate, you're approving a proposed tax rate. You can approve the budget and then I can go back in and before it's a quote posted and presented to the secretary. Fill in the areas in which that money, the tax rate would. The whole, the zeros, sorry guys.
Thank you, so the budget can be amended in.
Yeah, so, and this is where I really want council and even the public, thank you guys for saying. And the budget is not concrete. This is, we may bring in this money, we may not bring in this money. You know, our priorities on October first may be a pension and then on October second, we're not gonna do it. The idea is to have a guide in order to run the city. The idea is to have a guide in order to run the city to allow departments' ability to do their jobs. Everyone knows that we have a shortfall, we don't complete it. We have an overage, council may come back and say, you know what, we have a bit of money, let's go ahead and put it towards A, B, and C, including reserves. Money can be put aside according to our financial policy, specifically to start building those reserve accounts. Those are the accounts that aren't dedicated, it's the, as some people call rainy day. Right now, our reserves are all lit.
So we have no running reserves right now?
Not really, no.
No. Okay, and so I think a lot of people, in general, misunderstand what a budget is. I think it's something that is concrete and can't change. It's just like a personal budget, where things come up, you may have to change your budget a little bit. That's correct, good analogy.
And I know, Chris, you had mentioned before, you know, like, well, if I have an emergency and I don't have the funds, you have to make those decisions like, well, do I pay for this this month and or fix this? Same with the city budget.
I'm replacing my roof.
Yeah, the idea really is, this is the guidance to allow us to operate. And it addresses the biggest concern that the city currently has, the infrastructure, and addresses the, you know, employees. And it has your day-to-day operating.
Your software.
And it does have the software, it has the ability to to bring in a third party to help us with, you know, employee compensation and qualifications. And the big part of the money coming out of this budget is actually from the A R P A, that million dollars for the water treatment plant. The city did not receive any grant funding, we apply and we continue to apply. And but, you know, we're utilizing money that has been given to us that does have a time restriction we spend. We have a project, we have an engineer, we're gonna do it, we're gonna move forward.
Yeah, that money is in your budget, that million dollars. Yes, so it's already been allocated, it has to be allocated. All right, council member, yes?
One thing, I think this is a very multifaceted topic, we should have a deep discussion. It is a lot of pieces, also one moving piece out there. The, remember that, or when's the election, remember? The election coming up this November?
Tuesday, November.
I believe it's November thirty. Some, some sorry day, anyway.
So that will be, I mean, the assumption in state of Texas, we can rise it in, it should happen, it's almost a cat's eye way that property tax, home state exemption, one hundred thousand is gonna pass. But that's, we're gonna vote for that in passing. Home state exemption, they're gonna go from forty to a hundred. So we will see, so homeowners will see a drop in their school taxes, which is not a great table now, tomorrow is. I can't do this as an opportunity for us to actually raise. We look at previous years, and here this is all numbers. We will get house going every twelve.
Thanks.
The adblock from twenty nineteen to say twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty two, we had one point nine nine million adblock. Different places, that's all I, and then twenty nineteen, one point nine seven. But not too much of that increase, if you actually look at that from nineteen to twenty two, that's a one point one increase. You can see, this is right, it's not a large part of it, thirteen percent, also thirteen, fourteen percent over those years today, adblock percentage of that. But the others have increased a little more. And we have only increased property tax one point one percent from that time back. And then the, I guess I think it is extremely important, too, when we come back in. This is how, it's just fascinating how much of it, but seventeen point one million dollar budget definitely happened this year. If you, that was including, how much were we gonna have with all those six reductions? How much is that gonna bring in an extra adblock? So five hundred?
Yes, five hundred.
Well, if you just made that five hundred, oh. Basically, a five thing, because if we went, no revenue. This year's budget would be sixteen point eight. First one, you said.
They wouldn't have these from proposed, uh, factor of the additional prepared guidance. I think that was five.
See, an adblock, the budget we have is two point four. Four hour, five hour, hour, one point five, the pay sets, without the previous year was. The fifty four five, five to one point seventy five. That puts us at five sixty point six. The fifty six point six, sorry, different for a little while. Sixty point six. And this is one point one for the A R P A. And that puts us at fifteen point five. Previous budget, the budget is fifteen point four. See, if you don't bring in extra adblock, take out the one point one nine A R P A, we're running a very similar budget to last year. But what does interest me is that Mr. Seaton brought it up. We're headed up a billion dollar under, and we just are hitting extremely conservative. And if that's the case, is what I see is, that could almost be an opportunity, because it's revenue we already have to put into that budget. So that gets reinvested, or that's working for the budget.
There's a lot of, you said, on positions that won't build. Jobs, we're done, once we, once we build them. But we're just got, yeah, we're just got pushed to this next budget.
Why aren't we running, you know, even this year?
Well, part of it, as I mentioned, is due to the base, that we have had to start turn over. It's also for the next year's budget, remove those positions. So the positions that had, still this year that were new positions, this year have been removed, so that we can fill the positions that haven't been. So that does under other budgets, but the added position can be.
Actually, we're running eighty five to confirm, the budget is negative five. All right, so there's still actually for a decrease in full.
We're actually budgeting less than more. For, we, we have budgeted employees for this year, we're budgeting less for next year. We've removed, left in this budget.
You're still at an eighty five real teams right now, and we're budgeting in for ninety five. So we're still running fewer teams right now that we're putting.
Yes.
Okay, Monty? Council member Stevens?
Who? I still.
So in twenty two dash twenty three, this current fiscal year, the ARPA funds were not, probably were in that budget. The one that were currently in twenty two, twenty three.
There are not any about.
Are, are they in the proposed twenty three, twenty four? Okay, so that's a million, what is it, a million what should we receive? One million, so one point one million of that is our, it's not in twenty two, three budget.
So that's why I have a really important question. Our fund balances. Butch.
It's canceled, so sorry.
So, 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 and so, by reason, our waste, it's not seen as the finance or, of the homeowners, they apply, talking about it the right way.
Right, you should tell me we had no money sitting unassigned.
Our reserves are all lit, right. Our fund balance is one, we have maintained so many months, well, because it was an asterisk, that's the whole debt. So part of that is already technically goes unassigned. If everything was to stop, we'd have to have, you know, your time to be able to be operating. And the remaining portion, um, that is we use for other things, um, as.
But then. That's.
Well, you have to look at it. I mean, if water was all of a sudden go dry, and you still have to be operating. Um, I don't know the state regulations off the top of my head, but it's three or six. But you have to have.
So, that's a massive question. Yeah, I just want the, this is our general fund balance. It's two point, um, based upon the budget that's here, says seven hundred thousand, it's a sign. It says two point one million, I'm assuming. I just want to finish by this piece of paper we all want, two million. We keep out of six hundred thousand dollars on top, that's an apple back up to about two point seven million dollars. What number should we?
I can't remember because I don't have those charges. It's not the catch already, and it sort of sits in the book we're at. But ideally, you could say, we need a hundred and fifty thousand, um, three hundred thousand a month to operate. And then you multiply that by three to six months, and that's where, that would be your standard operating, on if you were to. Say we're far.
So, so which says, not all of the money is gonna get consumed. In the event we had a cataclysm event, which says we have some flexibility. Not clear what that number is, okay? That's, and that's on the general fund, then we look at the enterprise funds, that's a different number. So my calculations going through in our budget, that was, we have three point nine million dollars. Uh, and we validated one point six for our treatment plan and other items, that leaves us roughly two point three million dollars. Uh, and we're gonna underrun that and increase that. I think it's important for us on council to really understand all of our branders, so we can make some, more decisions about what that looks like. Because then if I look forward, soon as our treatment plan gets done, okay? Throw a million bucks out, let's get twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, which says, and our packet on page thirty says it's gonna be fifteen point six million bucks. And I'm just trying to understand how we go from fifteen point four to seventeen point one, take a million out, now we're down at sixteen point one. But next year, we're gonna be fifteen point six. So trying to understand how all that ties together is the question that I'm thinking about, and again, us thinking about what we're doing. How we can actually employ, we can't talk about that with our budget. I, at, at this point, my short lose, and I, I was lockstep in on sixteen point eight. And, uh, when we went to seventeen point one, I lost it because we spent four, now five months on this budget. And we were all lockstep on sixteen point eight, and then we changed, and that's going to have our, we're sixteen point eight, that's it, we're there. Uh, and the fact, and the, and the, uh, the tax, property taxable sort of sells now.
Just trying to see, I mean, with the unassigned funds or the not, two point one in the general, two point three in the enterprise, which is at four point four. And then if you add about a million again this year, we're at about five point four. Five point four, if we are doing about a sixteen million dollar budget, maybe a little less, that's about there, about a year. But that's, we're, if we're going based off the budget, we sell finance for about four months.
That's been pretty constant.
What's that?
The unassigned.
I, I don't know, that's what I said.
Sure, so, so have, so we, we, when I started, the city, the fund balance or unassigned was negative one point one million.
Yeah.
But we had no fund balance.
Maybe you got a problem, just don't worry. I, I, I thought. I was just, that is, five million dollars.
We spend our one point one ARC. That they start, it starts the process, it's gross profit. So it's right in the bar screen, it's right in the aerators, this would be a clarifying, ready, drive. We were quoted, what, five point six million for the whole case, this.
Did you do that?
The remaining, if we shoot it in that direction. It could be through debt, but we're not.
Do you know what, you missed your bond ago? Frank knows, can you put in there already? About longer.
Uh, the last little wire I got was.
Who's that role? States pushing money for the role, ways bar two or something, that, that, those, you know, exchanges, I can't remember where.
Yes, one of the propositions coming up for vote is to create bits for war.
Any other discussion? Hey, let's vote, all in favor of the.
Roll call. Roll call.
Okay, roll call.
Would you like me to call?
Yes, please, why don't you do it?
Okay, if you could just say for or against, uh, councilor Stokes?
For.
Rodriguez? Nance?
For.
About that?
For.
I'm in Seattle.
Against.
Okay, so we have approved the second final rating of ordinance twenty.
Okay, so we have approved the second final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh eight dash oh one. All right, let's move on to action item number two, city manager, you would read that, please.
Approve the first being the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero nine dash zero one, an ordinance approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four proposed tax rate of. Zero point four six six three two six for a hundred of assessed valuation for the fiscal year October first, twenty twenty-three through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. For use and support of the municipal government of the state of Alpine, Texas.
Okay, any emotion? I need a second. All right, moving into discussion, city manager.
So in, in situation from not only the workshop, but the information item, um. This is the ability to amend this ordinance to reflect a more accurate and true tax rate. Um, based on conversation, Mr. Nance has proposed going with the voter approval rating. Um, I know, how to give it, um, is leaning towards the no new revenue rate. And so this is your opportunity to continue discussions. And this is the proposed rate for the, the final reading, this will go back and update the cover pages of the.
Okay, so when this is approved, there's still opportunity in the next week. Perhaps to change it. Okay, so this is your time to change, okay? All right, this is it, guys, this is it, all right. Here's my point, okay, if we, if we approve this. One point four six six three two six, then we have to have the voters, the voters in petition to go for an election. Um, I am not recommending we approve the law, I'm, I'm, I'm not, that's what I'm having.
And just for all of us, we're just back, because it's a great question. If the voters were to petition. What, how much, how many voters have to come for a purpose?
So you have to have three percent because of registered voters, so that's forty-five, and we had fourteen, or fourteen hundred voters, that's big. There were obviously, um, and then they have so many days to file a petition. Um, the petition has to be verified, and it has to go out for the election, we have to all those voting for the election. Um, if it fails or if it gets approved, determines if the tax office has to reissue savings and refunds for those who didn't, the wage of penalties. Here's my next one, if all this happens, like I say, you know, what, where do we go, what, what we have to do? We'd have to come back in and rethink. So if it fails, ideally, it automatically goes back to, I believe, the no new revenue. It's not lower than two and a half, where would we go there? So the ones that do not require voter approval, we may even diminish, which brings in, um, one time every three years, five hundred thousand dollars, correct? Then no new revenue and the voters, voters, the bonders are not have voted. Since ours was, it used to be the other way, the minutes was all in voter approval, but then our budget changed.
What you also understand is. The ones that are, for lack of, unterm allowed, will solve the group issue, no new revenue and voter approval. Correct?
And diminish. Right, um, I think the minutes is really, no one's shown any merit to. I don't leave anyone on the table. Um, the no new revenue to voter, or you could do a slight increase above the no new revenue.
I, I have in the paper, it's not that. Not that paper, don't, and that is don't do, but I, I think share of product. New taxes. Look at the numbers that are there, throw that out. Uh, two hundred thousand, four hundred seventy dollars. I, I don't think that's gonna fall in, I know we have sat, I've sat up here for two and a half years. We haven't had the money to fix our infrastructure. And I think that's a dire strike to the fee. For over seventy-five or eighty dollars a year. I know, I know it will affect this, and I understand that, I don't. That's good and bad, it's bad for them. Uh, they use the same water, they use the same water from their models, that worries me, you know, we're paying one point one million, where are we gonna get the stopping? Where do we get?
So just an observation, property tax revenue is not impact, water, wastewater, gas, airport, any of that. That's all there is by these. So what I'm about property tax is going into.
General.
The general.
So, so this is where I think everyone needs to be on the same page. I understand that you added for the whole. And, and when you wanna summarize the whole budget, you would hit the bottom line, is it seventeen, is it sixteen, where we. Property tax does not go towards the enterprise funds. It is solely for the purpose of the demo fund, which is your street department, your animal control, your police department, your demonstration, your city council. Your parks, your building maintenance, your human resource, your building service. Um, and then your contracts that we have, like our ambulance contract, our prior contract, um, our tax contract. So when you look at the property tax, that is what it's funny. So when we proposed everything initially, the increase from the appraised values. Was going to go to board your streets and then not using the fund. City can always use the fund balance, but we've just gotten to a healthy point, where in this, where I, I mean, I would agree with Rick. You really need to outline a plan before you start dipping into it. Yes, usually you do, I see a little bit of the gear, a little bit of it there. Um, but companies.
Board wastewater, oh.
So, in some ways in this, so you can, the, the, the city could amend and say, I wanna put this money towards this. I would never recommend it. Because you have enough issues within the general fund, your streets, that it needs to be applied to streets. The budget changed specifically to include the additional fees to go to hold streets. And the two items that would be coming out of fund balance. That's where that big difference can be. Currently, you know, depending on which direction we go, the budget would have to be amended. And, and you know, matter what tax rate you go with, you would turn around, you know, with the proof, and we would amend the budget to redefine the code. Like I said, not setting concrete. Whatever direction the council goes, is what do you wanna accomplish with this little bit of action? Do you wanna dip into fund balance, or do you not want? Do you want to put some towards the, you know, street department to allow for additional outside paving? And you may come back on Saturday and be like, you know what, let's just change the whole budget, give it all to them. Um, they, they, these are hard decisions, but unfortunately, like Rick said, we've been working on this for quite some time, it's been. Number.
I'll bring in one more thing to the, when we say a hundred ninety thousand dollars to the average home, home takes in here, is about, you know, seventy dollars over the year, five dollars eighty cents, something like that, so I don't think that's drastic, if you have an average home. If looking at businesses part of, and you have a certified values protest, the data that we get from the pad. It lists the count of the protests and the market value of protests. So this is separated by commercial property, home family residences, sequel family residences, these are people that protested their balance. And we come in and you look at, you took this, you said the average commercial property that protested and just got all their protests, even our total, uh, gross value down on the tax. One point one million. Home family, seven hundred twenty-seven thousand. And the average single home, five hundred seventy-eight, what's that? So the commercial properties that are protesting, this is a phenomenon called regressivity, uh, regressivity in cat values. Which is basically, you have a high value property, you're probably gonna protest it a lot, and, you know, throw it down the stream, someone done with a lower value home. So over time, those protests did approve, you know, over time, it seems the higher value property is not getting, you know, a lot of value. But there's something back to back, they're already on high. Because they, you know, you're, they're protesting your property.
My degree of seventy dollars just not too much, a lot, that's it. But we're taking into account everything else that is going up, that, in China. You know, party, that, that's going up, we have people that are just. And yes, we have had these problems, but you can say, there's years, so we can't expect to fix everything right away. A problem that has been, problems that have been held. At the same point, I said, I'm just wrong, sorry, and I just think. People, it's.
Say, three was the tie in that went through the previous budgets, solved the, uh, previous property tax of first, so many years. In fourteen, we had about a hundred and thirty thousand, we, we haven't had, we haven't had anything here to. The closest one would be seventeen, eighteen, thirteen, our so was probably a hundred and eighty, five, two hundred and fifty. But after that, it developed to be about eighteen thousand, three thousand, forty-five thousand.
That's my question, does it?
I'm gonna. That's approval, who will move for election?
Only if we, our council pushes a rate that has to. Don't push a rate that has vote protection. Otherwise, it wouldn't. That's my pursuit.
Didn't even put more out there. Tonight, and we are actually doing a community workshop on October sixth, the county blood states, we're gonna do all the roads up there, we're gonna do them ourselves. So that's where my head says, I, uh.
Comment there. It's a farmer, two residents here. Our audience, no matter what you decide, and this is what I go there, you have to be able to. Currently, if the city goes with the voter approval, it would go specifically to the streets. And to not using fund balance for the software and the way that. It wouldn't go to anything else. Uh, for some reason, we. I would argue not to touch those, and we reduce everything else. Because you're specifically increasing to cover these projects. And that's been really the focus with any conversation I've had, is I don't think our, our residents are, are gonna deny, if one, they can visibly see something being done with what we said we were gonna do. If you're gonna ask for more money, show me what you're gonna put it towards. Country Club of States is a prime example, they want their road fixed.
So, 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 uh, Megan. This council, you specifically have tried. A lot to go get some paving done this year. And we've been unsuccessful.
This year, yes, um, as a result, I've done some internal research, and I found three companies that may be willing to come up.
Okay, 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 good, that's encouraging.
Tell me that one. I couldn't hear, okay, sorry.
Yeah, because that's to me, roads are road to roads, which goes back to the discussion we're gonna have on Saturday. What are chip seal, which are not, that's an important discussion we're gonna have, because chip seal runs, what, twenty thousand block? I don't know. And, uh, hot mix, forty thousand a block. And as one who's laid a lot on.
But what's the longevity of them?
Oh, I know, that, that's the point we raised, so it's a question about, uh, how do you maintain that? Because I have a driveway, I have a hot mix driveway, and I have a chip seal drive, and my driveway is really long. Uh, and so long as I cope, my chip seal is fine. I just gotta do every seventy years.
When you talk about telling them what we're gonna do, they all wrap about their bills, that's what we're gonna fix with the software. If we can fix the roads, they can see that, I drive on them too, I think people forget that we drive on these, I'm on the same, driving the same roads they're driving. And especially now, because they're all calling, they know we're gonna do all this, go on my road, and I did, and there's some bad ones over mine, not around right at my house, see? Those have all gotten done in all these previous years. But you go on down toward Dr. Gluck and down in there, it's bad, I mean, they're, they're just bad.
So this is, I, I mean, as we slowly, and I understand it, I mean, unfortunately, progress has not been as fast as we would have liked. But we've slowly started to make clearer understandings of this is what we're spending our money on. When I started at the city, the biggest expense was employees, and the biggest complaint was they were standing around doing nothing. You're paying so and so X amount, and they sit there all day. Our employees work.
I should say, I've never seen that.
Or neither or not, I, I mean, I'm sorry, but when we had this storm this weekend, you had two employees out there making sure that every resident still had water. Because when those Vikings hit, they can take out a pump. Um, when you have issues with the, the snow and the ice, any team's the one out there icing or de-icing, icing, de-icing things. And these aren't decisions we wanna make, we don't wanna increase, and no one does, I don't even think the county really wanted to, but. We visibly wanna show the public that we are trying to do what you're asking us to do. The money has to be there. The only other option that I will ever throw out there is, i- i- if you don't want to slowly start making the increases in what comes in from property taxes. And be prepared to slowly start using that fund balance.
I, I would say one thing that, like, hearing what you guys went through, uh, from debt, right, a negative fund balance towards you guys, like. Debt is an albatross across the neck of anyone, and so, y'all have already done the hard work, I mean. To get out of debt was much harder than what I think could happen, where having a, when having a million under run to me is an amazing thing, because. Having capital, nothing happens without capital, and having that freed up capital, and then I, I prefer the voter approval just because the flexibility of the funds, I mean, we spent seventeen hundred last meeting. Meeting estate demand for Verizon phones. Um, but that's why I see the city kind of an amazing, amazing inflection point, because y'all have already gotten out of debt, created a capital, or created a. Fund that we can utilize, HR, the thing like that, that didn't even cross my mind, but taking the fifty thousand to take the workload off you. Like, if we were in debt, that would never happen. Um, so I feel like we're at the inflection point of what the city can actually accomplish, which is super, I feel like it's a good time to be like, that's all.
Yeah, what we used to spend on interest, Megan, about three quarter of a million, when we came on board.
For debt, um, you break, that was about half a million, about three quarter million, and now we're down to a hundred. So the, the city, when I started actually budget, was lower than our debt.
Yeah, oh yeah.
We had over nine million in debt. And I mean, it was, it was rough, um, but, you know, we hired key people, we came in and, you know, poor Darryl, Darryl was called, no. You don't need a new vehicle, duct tape it. Those were hard decisions at that time. We're at the opportunity now, where our hard decision is, let's build and let's continue, and, and. Bringing a little bit of action.
And y'all were paying half a million dollars to service the debt?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, self charge. Oh, yeah.
And we're at now one of them.
So the general funds, um, portion is a hundred and forty, forty one? It's a huge difference.
That's the streets right there. I mean, compared to the hundred thousand.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The largest portion of the debt is tied to our water. And there are bond covenants that restrict us from what we can do with those.
And I, I would, I've just mentioned this, I did actually do the de minimis. I'm not interested in the de minimis, but. That for a hundred ninety thousand dollar home, homestead, ten percent increase would be ninety seven, ninety eight dollars instead of seventy two. So. Because of percentages, they scale.
So is there a proposal on the table?
Are y'all ready?
So the current motion is the point four, six, six, three, two, six, as written on the, and we needed amendment to go on.
I'll make an amendment to, what is the motion?
For point four, six, six, three, two, six.
So I'll make a motion to amend the point four, six, six, three, two, six, to the voter approval rate of point four, five, seven, five, five, four.
Point four, five, seven.
Five, five, four.
I was second to four, five, seven.
Four, five, four.
Uh, five, five, four. Four, five, seven, five, five, four.
And that results in. A reduction in the tax rate. But an increase in revenue.
Correct.
With the intent. Of those dollars going towards streets. Software. And.
The employee, employee study.
Boy studying. Those are the, that's, that's where the money is going.
So did you wanna make an amendment to the amendment to include that?
It's on the videotape. We'll sit here and find it.
So. The, the, the amendment is to amend the tax rate. The budget is a whole separate conversation. And I already have a note that in October to amend it to reflect the.
Okay, so therefore we don't need to say that, okay.
So what will happen? Is the budget amendment bring the budget.
So the, the budget's been approved, you proposed an amended tax rate, I update accordingly. The cover sheets, and in October, like I said, it's not concrete, I come back in. To amend, which is in alignment with everything we're left.
Which will bring the budget down to about sixteen point nine.
Which is.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we have an amendment to vote on to amend to the voter approval rate of point four, five, seven, five, five, four. We have a motion for that. I need a second. I'll second. Okay, and roll call vote.
All righty, um. Stokes.
For.
Rodriguez.
For.
Nets for. Sanada for. And Stevens for.
All right, and now we need to do away with the main motion. As amended to point four, five, seven, five, five, four, which is the voter approval rate. Roll call vote.
Stokes.
I want to vote. You're voting to approve point four, six, six in this vote.
It's, it's the original motion as amended.
Yeah, so we have to amend it to point four, five.
Vote yes to approve the original motion as amended.
Sorry about four.
Yes.
Okay.
And y'all.
Rodriguez. Okay, Nets for, Sanada for, Stevens for.
Okay, so it is unanimous to approve the first reading, twenty twenty three, oh nine, dash, oh one, approval. Approving the fiscal twenty twenty three proposed tax rate as amended of point four, five, seven, five, five, four.
I would like to make a comment. This is just the first reading with the proposed reading.
Okay.
The second and final reading that will take place will have very specific language in which we can uh move to.
Remind me of that. Okay, all right, so. Moving on to action item number three, city manager.
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash, oh nine, dash, oh two, and ordinance amending the city of Alpine fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget. Providing repealing inseparability clauses, Texas Open Meeting Act clause, and providing an effective date.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash, oh nine, dash, oh two.
I need a second.
I'll make a second.
Okay, discussion, city manager.
As outlined in our ordinances and required, um, the city is required to recognize additional and decreases in revenue and expenditures. What you have is the ones that are required for city council approval. Those are the ones that require amendments to salaries. Um, some of the line items we are reducing specifically to cover some of the overages uh in contact where we've brought in contract workers. Um, we do pay them out of a separate line item instead of through. Uh. The salary line item itself. Um, it's also to recognize the increased revenue in the airport, in the hot fund. Sorry, guys, my computer is not with me today.
It's okay, take your time.
You have the breakdown with you, um. The minor line item changes um are all done internally through department heads and myself. So the ones that are being proposed are the ones that require city council approval, but I want to walk through each one. As I get into it.
Sneak off and take a lot of work.
Okay, okay. We're looking for exhibit A, Megan.
Yes. So it is a spreadsheet. Yeah, I know. It is broken down by each of the major funds.
It's four, two, seven, I think. Four, two, seven? I thought it was four, I need to.
So it starts off with. You find it?
You wanna?
No, I think it's four, two, seven, so I'm telling them, but our page. I'm just doing, no.
It's gonna be after the budget, so after all the capital assets. Before, well, you're, keep your, keep going way past the assets.
Action item three. Were you?
Find it. Yes, okay. So the first recommended adjustment is to recognize the increased revenue from the checking and reserve accounts. Um, we had a huge fluctuation in increased interest. On all of our checking and reserve accounts. So I'm requesting that the city recognize um the increases in revenue. For these line items, it doesn't actually increase the revenue for the whole entire budget. Um, but I did wanna recognize specifically the accounts that it does affect because they are large increases. As you can tell, um, overall, the increases. Eighty five thousand in capital improvements, eleven thousand in fire. Eighty five hundred in creek, probably no level four, and. The interest for the general fund checking account, you create forty two thousand five hundred. You'll notice that what we originally amended was significantly lower. We hadn't been collecting the interest, um, this year was a. Broke year for interest rates. Um, so I'm reflecting that with the. Increased improvements. You see the deduction coming out of capital improvement reserves. Part of this year's budget um was. To have the outsourced paving, which we didn't utilize, um, we're not utilizing that reserve account at all. But in order to show the balance between our increase in interest, I reduced that one line item. Uh, the second section is to increase the overtime in the police department. Um, the police department does um have grant funding available that they utilize to the max. Um, this year, they.
Good.
They were very busy, um, they did have some. Turnover throughout the year, they did stay consistent with their employees overall, um, but it did affect their overtime during those turnovers. And so we're increasing the overtime line item and reducing the salary line item. The fire department. And we were hit hard this year with the insurance for workman's comp. T M L restructured how the workman's comp coverage is covered. And so we're increasing that line item by. Thousand five hundred and twenty six dollars. Um, retirement, um, the retirement also. Um, unexpected, it's based on the number of employees who meet the retirement qualifications. The fire department has increased the number of volunteers, which means it's an increase in expense. And that does reflect an increase of four thousand five hundred and thirty six that was originally budgeted. And then fire calls. Um, I'm increasing in additional ten thousand dollars, um, the reason for this being, um, we still have not, so we're in September. So we have one month left to, to pay out the fire calls, and then of course, the contract completely changes and how it's structured. And so we are estimating about another three to four thousand in fire calls, hopefully that will cover the difference. In order to keep within line of. You know, if you increase one, you've got to reduce another, um, I am reducing the maintenance yard line item by thirty one thousand sixty two. And that project wasn't completed this year. And that would balance out the difference between the increase in the fire, reducing another expense. Uh, the next one is to register the contract labor for the fire department, I'm in fact, the finance department. And the city did bring in an individual to assist. It is a small amount of money, but since it does reflect coming out of salaries. Um, that does have to have council approval. The next item is the health insurance fund. This is to reflect the increase in interest, um, we typically do not budget in our health insurance fund. And we've had currently about fourteen thousand in interest come in, so I wanted to recognize that increase, um, so that everyone can see it. And the other one is the expenses within our health insurance fund. These are the premiums that go towards our task cart. And this is the benefit that the city provides our employees. And that's not only the premium, but the claim, so it's recognizing the expense, um, about twenty six thousand. And the next one is, uh, once again, it's the enterprise water fund. This is to recognize the increased revenues and landfill lease. Please note that this isn't changing the overall revenue of the budget, it's recognizing the increases in these specific line items. And this is the interest in all of the accounts, um, in our landfill lease. We budgeted a hundred and twenty five in the landfill, um, we're currently at about a hundred and ninety two thousand. So we're recognizing an increase of ninety seven. And in order to balance it out, we're reducing what we would have transferred. We are currently not transferring, but just to have the, the clean. Increase, decrease, um, that's where it was removed from. Um, recognize overtime and contract for the water department. Um, because this is affecting salaries and overtime, um, it does have to have council approval. Um, because we have less employees currently, um, salaries increase or decrease, but overtime increased, balances itself out here. So it's just a, a. Reduction in salaries and an increase in overtime for the water, wastewater, and for the sanitation. Um, we did hire a contract person, um, to assist with the recycle center, so we're reflecting, recognizing those expenses as well. Um, recognize revenue sales uh for fuel and ground in the airport. We estimated six hundred and fifty, and we're looking at about six hundred and seventy five. Um, the ground lease, we budgeted fifteen five, we're looking at about twenty two, and of course, the interest for the accounts. Um, great year for interest rates, significantly increased. In order to balance it out, um, the reserves, which we did not, we're being reduced, um. And of course, we're, we're not. Um, hotel occupancy tax, they think this recognizing the additional revenue. Um, we're recognizing, we budgeted six hundred and fifty, we're adding about a hundred for a total of seven hundred and fifty. For this fiscal year. As a result, um, we're also uh updating the expense side to include. Adjusting the overtime promotion, advertising, promotion of the arts and the signage. And the signage originally had no budget, um, so we increased it to the four hundred, four thousand two hundred and thirty five. Increase the promotion and advertising, um, to reflect the increase in revenue, um, to meet the, the state fifty one percent that were required. Uh, interest and revenue for fund eight. Um. Been a great year for the gas department, um, we are increasing. Their revenue for all of their interest accounts, checking accounts and that kind of things, and then reducing. Um, like the auction, um, they did not auction anything off. And we're also increasing penalty fees and a. Road cut fees. Sorry, I'm reading sideways. Change for some reason, and so to balance it out, you see the increase in.
Okay.
So that's just to amend, um, the ones that are required to come before council. Um, in the cover sheet, it does indicate that department head and city manager can make additional allocation. Uh, changes, if you look at August report, you'll see that we have some light items that are over and under. And those are internal line item adjustments within the department. And these are the big ones that I felt that council really needed to understand and recognize. I mean, we'd be great with interest. Um, we'd like to get very conservative, because we didn't bring in any interests in the past couple of years, and this year just hit us. Or I guess they were trying to make up for the past couple of years.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. We're voting to approve. What is it, the reading, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash, oh nine, dash, oh two? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, it's unanimous. So we have approved it, good deal. Hey, action item number four, city manager.
The next item is to approve resolution twenty twenty three dash, zero nine, dash, zero nine. A resolution authorizing the city to participate in the Rio Grande Council of Government Solid Waste Grant Program.
I need a motion. I need a second. Discussion, city manager.
So every year, the city of Alpine participates in the solid waste grant program. This past year, we offered three tire amnesties as part of this grant. Um, to help with the disposal of unwanted tires. This upcoming year, um, we are looking at adding some equipment, um, specifically an attachment. To make mulching a little bit easier. Right now, it's all manually being kind of put up into the mulcher. Um, so we don't, one log at a time. And this would be additional equipment resource to make the job easier, work smarter not harder. And this grant is fully funded by the council of governments, um, if we are approved. Um, they actually managed the grant on behalf of the city, which includes all the advertising, procurement. Um, end of the day, we get the part and.
And no match.
There is no match.
That's unusual for a grant. All right, any discussion? Council Rodriguez.
Enthusiastically support.
Okay, let's vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand, and we're voting to approve. Resolution twenty twenty three dash, oh nine, dash, oh nine, for us to participate in the Rio Grande Council of Governments. It was unanimous, city secretary. Okay, moving on to action item number five. Council member Stevens.
Yeah, so this is a joint act between Megan and myself on an annual basis. The uh, city has to have an agreement with the Alpina Infantry Club for water, because they buy water from the city. Uh, May and I met with the board, all of them, uh, and uh, talked about where we are with the current uh, agreement that. And the current agreements put together in two thousand sixteen required them to take certain actions. Which basically, they have not done. Uh, and so, we have a strategy basically says.
Council member Stevens, let me go ahead and get a motion since we're going into.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'll go and make the motion.
Okay.
Uh, thank you very much.
All right, I need a second. Okay, go ahead, continue. Sorry for that.
That's okay, no, that's, I should have popped up. The action we're taking is to say, hey. We, we're gonna continue with the existing agreement of a sixty percent reduction in the water fee. Megan and I would have liked to have made it seventy five percent. Because we are not providing them any affluent water. So as you know, they consume a lot of water. Uh, the current agreement says sixty percent plus free affluent water. We are gonna make it seventy five percent. Uh. Until such time as the float water came back online, okay? In addition, providing mulch to come to pick up. We also offered, hey, if you can tie in your water line system. We've got a bunch of pipe that you can use that is no longer used in the heart of the city, but certainly usable to move affluent water from point A to point B. Unfortunately, not a lot of action is taken. Unfortunately, not a lot of action has taken place. So, uh, the intent is to bring this forward as to say, we're continuing with the existing agreement, that's number one. Number two, we'd like the country club to come talk to us on a regular basis to kind of give us an update about what's going on. And my intent is to go back to the board, assuming a council approves the continued agreement, this is okay, gang. This is not what we wanted to make happen. It's time to start moving. Uh, I have offered to provide a dump truck to deliver mulch. Uh, Megan's offered to provide, we'll get you over to get your free pipe and all that, nothing's happened. So this is, we may come back in the future if they start moving to come back with a recommendation, go to seventy five percent until the flood water is gone. We're just trying to light a bonfire under them to get going.
Okay, so this is to vote to approve what we already, this is going to be the same.
Yes, that makes sense.
Yes.
It's almost the same.
Yeah.
It's the sixty percent access to mold. But the most important part is that they provide quarterly, but no less than biannually.
Right, yeah, of course, yeah.
So I'll reach out to them if this is approved and say, okay, we'd like you to come and discuss with council.
And I'll reach out to her as well, I'm saying.
And then if they don't reach out at the first quarter, it just continues. I mean, it's not, it's not dependent on them showing up too.
We're trying to provide some leverage, but frankly, we've not been very successful in the past.
Do we have a date when the, when, um, that's not why we're coming again?
Oh, that's following a long dream.
Yeah.
It's it's intergant chart.
It really is. My, my question my question to the country club was, what are you going to do if the city can't ever provide it? Because it is T C P regulated and I don't know, next legislation, T C P can come back and get approval that it's not usable on.
And what was their response?
They haven't.
So we're trying to get their attention. Why are we going with the same thing, the sixty percent?
Good, because that's what they're having right now. Sixty percent is reasonable.
That's what I mean, but if we're trying to get their attention, I mean, if they're not.
So you go to seventy five percent. That's the, the carrot is fifteen percent, which reduces their cost to go operate the car.
So I don't think we should go fifty or forty if that's the direction you're thinking, to light a bigger fire. Um, it is a city asset. Um, we do own a significant portion of the golf course. Um, and it is something that is utilized by our residents to punish them for others' actions.
Yeah, we're just trying to get that book and I'm gonna spend all personal time down there.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, so that passes unanimously to approve resolution twenty twenty three dash oh nine dash ten for the contract between City of Alpine and Alpine Country Club. Moving on to action item number six, city manager.
Approve the twenty twenty three dash twenty twenty four Family Crisis Center of the Big Ben Agreement.
I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four Family Crisis Center of the Big Ben Agreement.
I need a second. Okay, discussion?
Um, background, the prior contract with the Family Crisis Center was a three-year, uh, tiered contract. Every year that the funding changed, it increased slightly. What is being proposed is a one-year contract at the current rate that we had budgeted for this fiscal year to be paid out in quarterly payments. And the Family Crisis Center does provide a valuable service to the city. But in light of prior discussions in regards to the direction the city may or may not go with nonprofits, um, I wanted to still provide for the Family Crisis Center, um, but also, um, not lock the city in if we made significant changes.
Council members.
Well, the one question I would have, and that we should have asked, was that they serve a five counties, so I kind of wonder what their other funding looks like as well. I I agree with this one hundred percent, but I'm just kind of curious.
So what they report to me on a quarterly basis from their financials is just what they use the city money for, and it primarily covers the costs to operate the building. That's their utilities, um, a little bit of salaries, office supplies, um, and building maintenance and
And this is, um, I think you had told me before that we help on utilities if it's a city building, but this is not a city building.
This is not a city building.
Any other discussion? Council member Stokes, my readings. So let's vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And this is to approve the twenty twenty four Family Crisis Center Big Ben Agreement. It passed unanimously, city secretary. All right, last action item, action item number seven.
Approve Director of Tourism Agreement with Chris Rucia of Bass Rapids.
I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Um, I do want to point out, um, hmm, Chris is present here if you do have follow-up questions with him. Um, Chris Rucia has been our Director of Tourism probably longer than he titled permits him. He's been doing this quite since two thousand and you know, the money, I don't think.
You didn't know I didn't plan it.
Yeah. He got the official title in about two thousand eighteen. Um, he has currently been our Director of Tourism for several years. And this contract is structured the same way as the prior contract. Um, it does show, um, his proposed contract at eighty seven thousand eight hundred and fifty four. Our current budget includes eighty one thousand eight hundred and fifty six. Um, it does, um, in the contract itself, uh, indicate that increase. I highly recommend that the council approve it. I think he is well worth it. And he does more than just help with tourism. Um, I know that when we were under the pandemic, he did a huge favor to the city in providing additional primary resources to help manage that as well. And he was the sole R I P that was, um, proposal provided. And it is a two-year contract with a three one-year renewal, just like the past contract. Um, it also includes an increase dependent on council. Um, council would determine annual increases to be added for that's just one year services provided.
That's what happens when meetings go too long.
Yes, I saw that.
Yeah.
A long year. Um, it also does include his proposal that he provided to the city of Alpine and all of his information. Um, references and services that he's provided to the city, his social media platform. And he has been working with Sartaco and Air D N A, um, to provide additional information on tourism. Um, first coming in, where are they staying, where are they buying? Um, he's done a lot of work over the past several years. And you'll also notice, um, there is a marketing plan within his proposal, something that, uh, Chris and I had discussed, um, that he provided. Um, it kind of gives you an idea of the direction we're trying to go. And he's done a great job.
Okay, any other discussion?
I agree that he's a wonderful asset to the city of Alpine and worth more than what we're giving him, so I
I I agree with council member Rodriguez. Hi. Any other discussion?
Just, um, so looking at here, the, uh, salary the salary, not me. The salary was seventy five thousand last year, but the reimbursables are twelve thousand. We know what the reimbursables would be.
So those are his out-of-pocket expenses, um, all of his travel training, he does go to the visitor conventions. Um, it is for Facebook advertising, it's the website hosting. It's all the things that it's easier for him to directly pay for than to come back to us. So we wrapped it up into a single payment instead of us having to break it all. And it actually gets broken down on that last, um, page. It's the web hosting, conference and meeting, travel, social media advertising, specifically Facebook. Um, it's also professional liability insurance and which is zero, but if we give them that, allow that.
Uh, one other question, um, is any part of his salary paid through H O T?
It's all paid through.
Okay, very cool.
This is not general under property taxes.
Council member Sinaté.
No question.
Council member Stevens. Hey, Rodriguez, I asked you.
Yes, sir. Before you ask.
Okay, all right, so all in favor, let's vote on approving Director of Tourism Agreement with Chris Rucia. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes unanimously. Very good. Council member comments. Okay, Stokes.
I'll have a few. Uh, Lex, that Dawn and Jen for both their presentation, know the library that that nine G E D program doesn't sound like a lot, but it's huge in an area like this. They've got two coming up here from Tulakwa. That's great. Um, I appreciate Karen's comments. I don't know how I'll handle that. And I'd like to thank council on our unanimous approval of the tax rate. I think it's good that we we stood together and and it shows Alpine that we we can, we are flexible and we do want to do what's right for Alpine.
For post tax. Yes, and we work together. Yes. Yeah. Okay, all right, council member Rodriguez. Council member Nance. Sinaté.
Do we know the forecast for Saturday morning?
No, we don't. You know what, if we pray, we'll be able to
That's true, that's true. Yeah, we could still do it.
In rain or shine.
Council member Stevens.
I'll just comment, looking forward to executive session.
Yes, yes, and I might go, my
we need to address the time.
Yes, they can we
Yes, yes, I wanted to make a comment first, though. Okay, I also wanted to thank the library and thank the Family Crisis Center for coming in and speaking, and also Karen for standing up and voicing her opinion. I think our library is absolutely outstanding. I cannot verbalize it enough. I mean, pots and pans and sewing machines and now telescopes. You can go check these things out. It's an incredible service to our community. And with our community, it's not just about streets and infrastructure, things like that. We also have to consider quality of life. And so they provide a great quality of life. And I'm looking forward to seeing the bigbenhelp.org website. All right, so we need to have a motion to move past nine o'clock.
So I'm making a motion to move past nine o'clock.
Okay, I need a second. Any discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, moving past nine o'clock, city secretary passed unanimously. So we're going to move into executive session. So that brings us to item number eleven, executive session pursuant to chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code. The city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting for any posted agenda item to receive advice from the attorney as permitted by law. Tonight, the city council rule recess into executive session pursuant to section five five one point oh seven one consultation with an attorney. May I get a motion to recess into executive session, please? I need a second. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we're going to proceed with a vote. Okay, and let's vote to move into executive session. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes unanimously. We're going to take a five-minute break before we proceed into executive session. The current time is eight twelve.
Alrighty, we're ready when you want.
Take a little nap?
All righty, we're ready when you want.
Okay, so may I please have a motion and a second to reconvene into open session?
Don't move.
I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a motion, a second to reconvene into open session, any discussion? Seeing none, will we proceed to a vote? If you vote in favor of the motion, please indicate this by raising your right hand. Okay, motion passes unanimously. So we will reconvene into open session at 9:40 PM. This brings us to item number 12, action after executive session. May I please have a motion to take no action?
I like the motion that counsel take no actions from executive session.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All right, seeing none, we're going to vote to take no action after executive session. All in favor, please raise your right hands. Okay, city secretary motion passes unanimously. Okay, at this point, we are going to adjourn the meeting.